Of the Lake Forest City Council, will the clerk please call the roll?
Honorable Mayor Lansing.
Here.
Alderman Beidler is absent, Alderman Morris is absent, Alderman Newman?
Here.
Alderman Rumel?
Here.
Alderman Tac?
Here.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Here.
Alderman Moreno?
Here.
Alderman Bushman?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Will you all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First item of business, reports of city officers. I really have one comment to make at the start of the meeting. A week from today is the ribbon cutting for the opening of the new Lake Forest Hospital, or Northwestern Lake Forest as we say, 10:30 next Monday in front of the new building, which will fully replace what was 119 years of facilities up through the present with all the various improvements, which adds up in the way these things are added up to four generations of service to Lake Forest residents. And I guess I would say Godspeed to the next four generations of Lake Foresters with this truly marvelous institution that has somehow, some way, rather miraculously appeared in our community several hundred million dollars later. A wonderful addition to our community. With that, I will turn to the city manager for comments.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, members of the council. First time I just wanted to note for the benefit of the council and the community is that, as you know, it's snowing outside. But we have, starting in mid-January, we moved into Phase Two of our salting program, which is that we don't do all 100% of the streets, we just do curves and hills and intersections and those kinds of things. Because I think some people have said, "Well, why didn't you salt my street?" Now, there are extenuating circumstances, and it was, I think, about a week ago that the Director of Public Works and I, based on street conditions and reports that we were getting from the Police Department, we did go ahead and salt all the streets because the side streets were pretty treacherous. But generally, we're only doing those roads or those intersections, hills, curves, those kinds of things, and try and cut back on the amount of salt that we put down on city roads from now till the end of the year. So I just wanted to remind people of that and ask that they drive slowly and take their time. The item under my report this evening, we put this on because despite having two excellent investigative reporters, nobody's asked the question about what's going on under the tarp at the library. And so we thought that we would bring the Director of the Library, Catherine Lemer, here this evening to allow you to sort of peek under the tarp and get an idea as to what's going on there, because this is, as you know, the library is a very important asset of our community. And there's an issue going on that we, as a community, need to understand and rally behind. And so Catherine is here to begin the conversation. Catherine?
Thank you, Bob. That was a nice introduction, so I can skip that part. But thank you for having me here tonight, and thank you for putting me first on the agenda, because my board is meeting as well right now. So I'm just going to give you a really high-level kind of explanation of what's going on. So like the hospital, the library served four generations of Lake Foresters. We were chartered in 1898. We are in our current building since 1931. All of the glorious parts of it are listed up there, from the art to the structure itself. So I like to say, even though we were built in 1931, we are out and about the community today, doing lots of fun work. We actually won first prize in our float division this year. But so this is all the kinds of things we're doing and accomplishing right now, 21st century work, but in a 1931 building. These are the challenges we're facing right now. This is why the dome is wrapped for the winter. We know that the leaded copper dome has to be replaced. We've got initial estimates starting at $300,000 and up. We know that the restoration on the limestone and brick substructure for the dome, another estimate of $100,000. That doesn't include sort of advice we've got that the dome should be modernized, it should be insulated, it should be ventilated. Those are all numbers that will go on top of those initial numbers. We have five separate and aging HVAC systems in a 32,000-square-foot building. They don't all speak together, they don't all work together. So that's another problem. We have the 1931 Nikolai Remsenov murals, the initial estimate to essentially, at this point, save and restore them is $1 to $1.5 million. I will say that when I was hired two years ago, I thought, "Oh, they just found some guy to paint some stuff on the wall," right? As we started to peel back the layers about him, he's a fairly prominent person of his generation. He's done, he did a lot of work in Hollywood, did work in New York. So those are all questions we're facing. You know, we have aging flattened roofs, we've got leaking skylights. We have, for those of you that have been around a while, you know, we were part of the city's ADA compliance checklist 2013, was it Kathy? I think. That work's not really been addressed, so that's something we're concerned about. And on top of that, we just sort of have chronic foundation issues. The latest investigation is that when the 1978 wings went on, they were perhaps not married properly with all the drainage systems into the existing building. So we have just kind of ongoing issues. And then just generally, the layout, the furnishings, the security in the building just don't really match a 21st-century building. So I just, I have hundreds of pictures of the dome and the decay, but I will spare you some of those, just to give you some highlights. This is the dome itself, the limestone structure, part of the challenge with it is that all of the water is being driven into the seams. So, you know, the question about replacement of the gutters, I mean, obviously, all of this in the context of its historical significance and dealing with the Historic Preservation Commission's advice and guidance as well. You can, this is a seam from the limestone, you can see the caulking is gone in many cases, or just lifts off. These are, this is just one example of a soldered situation on the dome roof. The dome was replaced in its entirety in 1984. It was built using the same design from 1930. So there's been some speculation that maybe some modification in the design might help it last longer. This is just an inside picture. We've had lots of people up in the dome. I worry about my liability policies. I've had board members up there. But these are just sort of kind of the things we deal with. The picture in the bottom right, we had a steam pipe develop metal fatigue last two weeks ago, and so we have another $10,000 plaster and restoration bill there. The murals up in the right-hand corner, you can see we're trying to stabilize it. We've had a restoration artist come in and patch it. So we have all of that going on. And then in May, we did a community survey. And the great news is that 95% of the people that took the survey said, "The library is relevant, it's important, it should keep expanding and doing what it's doing." So the other problem was is that they gave us this wish list. So we took the wish list, we put together a strategic plan to really give us guidance over the next two years. We kept it very short, because there's a lot of work to do, and we wanted to come back repeatedly and say where we were. These are our four goals. We've made some progress on some of them already. But what it really made us think about the board and myself was that we need to get proactive. We need to get, everything about this building for a long time has been reactive. And so we wanted to try and figure out a way to get ahead of the problems, too. We wanted to, we reached, we understood very fast that we were out of our expertise. One group of experts walks through the dome and says, "There's a new product, zinc something, 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 and you could use that, and we're, we can evaluate that." And then we wanted to respond to all these wishes that were expressed in the community survey. So what we did in November is we went out with a request for architectural services, a request for qualification for architectural services. And we wanted to, if you want to look at the RFQ, it's still up on the library website, but we really wanted somebody that had historic sensibilities, somebody that understood aging infrastructure, and somebody that had library experience to kind of come in and what I call marry it all together. Like, tell us what the cost of the risks that we have, you know, this foundation and this dome, and this is the cost of the things your community wants, and sort of put that together and give us a timeline and a price tag, right? So that my board can make a logical decision about how to take on the work, to take on the work, or whatever. So we had 12 firms actually came on-site, did two-hour tours of the building. I was very happy, not all of them left gasping in shock. And we got 11 submissions. We picked these five firms to come in for interviews. They're interviewing tonight and tomorrow night at the library. They, I think, are really high-quality people. Many of them have won awards in library design. Some of them have expertise in historic sensibilities, and some have expertise in the kind of structures we're dealing with. So the board is looking at them tonight and tomorrow night. And essentially, what the dome did, wrapping the dome for the winter, was just simply buying us time. The rapid acceleration of the damage to the murals, which is actually not caused by water leaking in, but by water in the brick itself and then leaching through. So the goal was just to buy us some time, get somebody in place that could help us, and then go forward. So that's the big level, big, high-level, rapid pitch.
Questions for Catherine?
I just have to ask, I went through the library budget a few months ago, in some detail, and you have a, there's a capital expense thing. How much of this is, I guess the other thing is, as a business, I own and operate property. So I'm coming at this from a property management, asset management point of view. Is there been a, do you think, an adequate long-term maintenance program for a lot of these systems? When you talk about five separate systems that are for heating, ventilating, and air conditioning that have been there, and steam pipes are blowing and all that, I mean, is this, is part of your question, is not just the resources and the money to do this, but what about the human resources to help you stay after the stuff at the boardroom?
I think that these are just very challenging buildings. And I think we've, this institution has never done a capital assets plan. It's been more in a reactive state. I can send to Kathy and share with you, when I started going through this RFQ process, I went through 50 or 60 years of building maintenance reports. And it's not been neglected. I mean, there's $300,000 in slate roof 10 years ago, everything, but it's always been in sort of a, the boiler blew up, let's fix it. And rather than thinking about it holistically and in a way that makes sense-
Long-term modernization, update, yeah.
Rather than just put in a new boiler because the last one-
Well, as you say, it's the 21st century, so maybe the time has come.
It'll be interesting, I think.
Any other questions?
I guess I would wonder, and maybe it's too early to ask this question. It sounds like you're going to get a comprehensive view. What do you think your timeline is?
I think that the timeline can be sort of chunked out. We put out a very aggressive timeline in the RFQ to, such, so aggressive, in fact, that a number of the teams responded by saying, "We can do this in your time, but this is the preferred timeline." I would say that by mid to end of summer, we will, we will at least know where we stand. Then the board has to make a very tough decision about how they move forward. One of the questions I felt it was important to ask in the RFQ, so that they would understand, so that we would all understand where we stood, is not only the cost of the risks, the cost of the desires, but at some point, is it logical to continue to put that much money in this building? And that's, that's from somebody, that's me asking the question of someone who, after two years, adores this building and thinks that, you know, it truly is the gem, that people refer to it here. But I think it's really important to understand that number.
That may well be the greatest challenge, because it's such an iconic building. And yet, we all have to be balanced, especially financially.
Right. We all have to be logical about our choices and desires.
Thank you.
Well, it sounds like the right reports are underway, and we-
You all have my emails, so feel free to stop by and see the building and our challenges, or email me. I'd be happy to send you anything I can.
So just have a snow-covered dome, dome in July.
You know, we, we had a lot of fun conversations, like, should we put a big smiley face on it? Should we put a dollar bill on it? What should we do? But we went with, you know, traditional dove gray.
Large $100 bill, yes.
All right.
All right. Well, thanks for the heads up.
Thank you.
And that completes my report for this evening.
Okay. Next on the agenda is comments by council members. Any particular remarks?
I have something, yeah.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Tonight, I'd like to provide everyone with an update on the actions that have occurred regarding the investigation of the lobbying expenditures for the pedestrian underpass and Amtrak stop at the Everett Telegraph Road train station. Last month, Alderman Morris announced a number of new internal controls designed to strengthen the city's financial management processes. Additionally, City Council retained Ms. Lee Jeter to perform an independent investigation of the matter. Over the course of the past few weeks, Ms. Jeter has collected and reviewed relevant data, as well as interviewed city staff members, elected officials, and others possessing pertinent information. In executive session following tonight's meeting, Ms. Jeter will present a preliminary report to City Council. As before, we encourage everyone who would like to submit information to call Ms. Jeter. To call Ms. Jeter to do so, parties may drop off information to Ms. Jeter's attention at City Hall, or request her contact information from Margaret Boyer over there, or quite frankly, anybody else from City Hall. We anticipate Ms. Jeter's will prevent her, present her final report at the February 20th City Council meeting. That's our next City Council meeting. Once again, on behalf of council, I'd like to thank the residents who came forward to voice their concerns. We appreciate your patience as Ms. Jeter completes a thorough review of this important matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Right.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I was not able to attend the last council meeting on January 16th, was able to review the video. And to my chagrin, there were several matters discussed at the last meeting that related to Ward Four, and I'd like to share some comments at this time. One topic was request for a special use permit to authorize a bank and a drive-through where McDonald's used to operate on the West Side in the Fourth Ward. I do thank my fellow Alderman, Alderman Moreno, for reading into the record the two concerns that I have with the proposal, which I referred to as the principle and the precedent. But I understand, as a result of the council's deliberations, they decided to ask the legal committee to review the matter. I recognize that Alderman Rumel and the mayor are liaisons to that committee. But because this does involve my ward, I would ask that I be provided an opportunity to provide some comments to the legal committee for its consideration as part of its review. I hope this request can be accommodated. The other topic I'd like to comment on relates to the West Lake Forest rail issues. First, I think it was helpful and important for the mayor to have confirmed to the public that the city's efforts for an Amtrak stop, for pedestrian underpass, and for enhanced commuter rail service do not affect or influence in any way the city's continuing opposition to a third rail in Lake Forest. That is what I've interpreted, and I'm glad that it is reinforced. Much has been said about all the great efforts exerted by the city since 2010 to obtain railroad approval for the Amtrak stop, for the pedestrian underpass, for the enhanced commuter rail service. I think we should exert at least as much effort in opposing the third rail, or any other railroad expansion that would increase the negative effect in our community from freight rail traffic. This effort should also be a goal of the city and part of the Lake Forest strategic plan, which was another topic discussed at the meeting and referred to by some of my fellow councilmen. I think it is important that we view it as an important goal of the city, since, in my opinion, and since the opinion of many, if not most, of the citizens, it has a greater impact to the city than those several other of the stated goals that the city does have. I'd also like to add that the city officials and as residents should not be asked to do nothing until a final environmental assessment is released. Just like with our other strategic goals, the city should be continually vigilant for any and all opportunities to act now or whenever to achieve its goal of no third rail. We should not preclude the opportunity to identify steps that can be taken now to favorably influence the final EA or otherwise achieve this goal. I also support the comments made at the council meeting that we maybe need to take a broader and creative look at our West Side Neighborhood Business District, and hopefully, we can do that before it's too late. With that in mind, I'd suggest that we consider having an agenda item, or items, as soon as next council meeting, to discuss what possible things we can do in connection with the rail issue, and also in connection with our, what I continue to call our Neighborhood Business District on the West Side of the city. Thank you for the opportunity to share these comments.
Anything else?
Well, I have a question.
Oh.
So where do we go from there if we think that that would be a course of action we'd like to take?
You're referring to an agenda item? Because it's not an agenda item, I'd suggest it be made an agenda item, opportunity for the public to-
Right. So do you want us to comment on that further, or, you know, how do we, how do we make that happen? This is my question.
Well, can I break the two issues up? On the rail issue, you know, certainly, the council can put that on any future agenda for discussion. I will say that the comp plan discussion is going to be on your March 5 budget agenda for conversation. So we are gonna, we're planning to talk about it at that point in time, and Kathy is going to be presenting a schedule of addressing the comprehensive plan, and we would be taking up the West Side Business District at that time. So you may want to pull that one off, and we can always come back at the March 19 council meeting, depending on what the council decision is at the March 5 budget meeting.
Okay.
Did we just agree to something?
Well, that's what I'm asking.
Or are we just acknowledging that?
I guess the question is-
I guess I heard it, and I didn't hear a motion to do it, or anything formal. I do think it bears some discussion.
As comments from a council member, I don't think I'm in a position to make a motion. It's just simply offering comments, because it's a non-agenda item. But the fact of trying to have more discussion on these topics, not at this current time, but where it's planned, where there's a formal agenda item, where there's an opportunity for input from the community, because I think that was a very important point that came out at the last council meeting, of the desire to have, you know, the civil discourse with the public and the citizens. And this is a very important item to them. And again, I think it would be appropriate. So obviously, Mr. Mayor, you know, you're a very important person in determining agenda items, so I do ask that-
Well, as is always the case, we enjoy and invite civil discourse, sir.
Yes.
Okay? The time and manner of a discussion bears some consideration. We certainly will be doing it in the future, whether it's exactly the next meeting. We have some, a number of things coming up on the agenda. So whether it exactly happens in February, I'm not sure. But-
Why not?
Would it make sense to defer that decision until we have the release of the environmental assessment? We can sort of measure where we are?
Well, Alderman Newman, that was one of my concerns, the statement that we should do nothing, and that's how I interpret, do nothing, either with citizens, or the council, or the city, until we get the final report. I think there are opportunities where we may be able to do things, and things have developed over time that we have taken steps, whether it's supporting our congressman in his proposal. There's an upcoming meeting prior to the issuance of the final report that the city's been invited to. I'm sure people from Action may have other suggestions. These are things that I think it warrants our deliberations and discussions and decisions before the final EA is issued. It may be too late to take steps then. And it's no different than these other strategic issues that we have. We should continue to look for opportunities and be diligent to take advantage of opportunities where we can do something now, rather than when it's too late.
Can I ask a clarifying question, I guess? Because I think it needs to be made clear that this city council and this mayor have had discussions with both state and federal legislators on this issue. So I think they know exactly where the city council stands on the subject, and, you know, recent letters and correspondence have all been received to them. The EA process is closed, so we can't submit any more material or information. And again, I think they've told us that sometime late spring, the final EA will be available for that time. So I think, to your point, Alderman, I'm more than happy to receive any thoughts and comments that people, the action group might want to make with respect to the discussion on the third track. But I'm not sure, short of engaging or expending funds, and we can talk about that certainly at the budget meeting, I'm not sure that we're in a position to say, "Let's do A, B, and C." And so I guess that's what, for us to have a fruitful conversation, I think we need to have some proposals before the council in terms of what is it that we're being asked to do. to do.
Well, I guess I'm taking it a step backwards and saying, let's discuss different opportunities, options that we have, so that we can come up with proposals, if there are any. And I'm not saying that we should be taking specific actions, but I think we do owe it to the public, and I do think it's something that the council is owed the opportunity of having a deliberation on this topic in an open forum as to what, if any, action. I do have other ideas, but again, I don't think we should be, and this is not the appropriate time, to delve into what might we do and what we should do in connection with this issue.
Yeah, no, I guess my point is, when we put something on the agenda, it's usually to get council to act on something. And so I guess my point is, Alderman, whether you have something or somebody else does, if they want to submit them to staff or to the mayor, we can then actually put them on an agenda so that it's clear to the Alderman what they're being asked to consider or to act on.
And I'm suggesting it be considered more deliberation rather than a specific action or resolution, and it goes to Alderman Newman's point, you know, is there something we should be considering, or are we correct in saying we should not be doing anything until after the EA is issued? I'd like to have, you know, the council's deliberations and discussion on that topic.
I don't think there's any way to clearly know that answer ahead of time. It could land in any number of different directions. I just, I would like to make clear the point that city council needs to maintain control of this process.
And I would not disagree with that, other than to say that city council should deliberate what we should or should not be doing at the current time.
I've got, I'd like to say two things. First, we're in the middle of an investigation, which I certainly would like to have cleared up and finalized, and that won't occur until the next meeting. So we're already into, we're already going to be into, what's the date for that? That's the 20th. If there's a, if there is to be any discussion regarding what we would do, because it involves, it may involve the expend of hiring council, expending monies on a council, I suggest that council discusses this in the executive session.
It seems to me that this is more of a workshop issue than it is a city council issue. I would hate to see city council time spent in a free-form discussion of something that we've actually had the vast majority of our city council time for the last several months taken up with, particularly when the issue is debating something that nobody's actually proposed to build. I mean, I sort of have a hard time endlessly discussing this at open council meetings, having the same people come in, say the same things over and over again. There's no new information. If the council's going to deliberate or debate the importance of new information, we should be able to do it in a more extended format, which to me seems like it would be a workshop format. But as of right now, there is no new information. So I don't see why we would continue to take large amounts of city council time, essentially discussing the same thing over and over and over again with no new information.
I agree.
I agree as well. However, I do think that there are things that we could be doing to think about, what in my business I would call contingency planning, the what-ifs, and each of those could be probability-weighted to develop a set of paths so that we are ready to make decisions and move forward regardless of the outcome of decisions that are outside of our control. So that could be accomplished, that study could be accomplished certainly outside of city council. I think that it should be a process that incorporates city council for any decision-making paths, and perhaps members of city council for the study itself. That might be something that bridges the gap between becoming an agenda item and doing the homework to get to the agenda.
Well, I think I understand the thought or the intent behind that, but that does deal with a lot of speculations and hypotheticals. And again, I, I think we're fully apprised of all the information that's out there currently about this matter. And absent that, I think a specific proposal, when as and if it occurs, is probably the better time to get after it. I don't think there's going to be a particular need for speed the moment it happens, you know, is another way to say that.
As a practical matter, if we would, if this is a discussion for open forum, including comments from the public, this is a whole meeting, okay? There will be, there will be 15 to 20 people that want to speak. There will be all kind of discussion up here, which will not come to any conclusion, quite frankly, because the, we're within weeks, perhaps months, not months, but probably weeks of the EA. Quite frankly, I'm not willing to take a whole city council meeting to have this on the agenda. I cannot conceive it being less than a full city council meeting with what else we got going on right now. I just think it's impractical. If, because it involves perhaps expenditure, legal expenditures, I'd be perfectly willing to take it into executive session, where we could talk about it, and it would be a very contained discussion, and I'd be perfectly willing to do that. But I don't think, I don't think we're in the position now to devote an entire city council meeting for this issue.
When do we think that the final EA will be issued? What is our ETA on that? Spring of 18, right?
Spring of 18, correct.
And so what, if anything, once that is issued, do we think we can do? That's where I'm sort of fumbling. I don't know, having never been through this before, and I'm not sure any of us have.
Well, I think that was Alderman Newman's point, is that our expectation is that when the EA comes out, there will be certain things reported in there, and likely certain conditions, not unlike when the city council puts conditions on special use permits and so forth. But at this point in time, we don't know what those are going to be and won't know until the EA comes out. I think that, much like we did when the draft EA comes out, we would probably recommend that you engage some consultant to take a look at it and say, you know, what are the ramifications and implications of this? And then I think to Alderman Eisenberg's point, is that I think then the city council may have an executive session to say, do we want to engage legal counsel to understand what our options are from a legal standpoint? Because once the EA comes out, that you are limited in terms of, through the process, what your options are. And so I think then you have to decide, do we pursue some type of legal action? Do we do this? Do we do that? Because it becomes less of a legislative action and more of an administrative or legal action at that point in time.
Well, so is your question, Alderman Bushman, what can we do in advance of that EA coming out to influence the result of it? Do we think that there's a realistic opportunity for us to influence that at this point?
Well, I'll point out that I just recently saw where the city of Deerfield updated their website, I think it was on February 1, indicating that they've gotten confirmation that the third rail through there...
I saw that.
...will no longer be in the EA. So that obviously is something that their efforts were successful in influencing the process and changing from the original, well after the comment period, to what is expected in the final EA.
Alderman, let me just clarify, because that's, that's not what their website says. Because if you go back and look, a year ago, in January of 17, Metra indicated that they were no longer interested in that, and Metra actually submitted as part of the EA that they did not want that there. Why it resurrected again a year later, I don't know.
I just saw their website.
But that was withdrawn by Metra a year ago as a part of the EA process.
I don't think there's a real direct cause and effect of Deerfield's thoughts and actions.
And the other, well, I think what other municipalities do and what success they have or lack of successes, you know, should be relevant in us considering what we can or cannot do. But going to this other point about having consultants, and I'm not thinking so much of legal consultants, but environmental consultants, because I think that is an important issue that's going to be addressed or need to be addressed in the EA. And that's one area I'm not sure we've ever retained or looked to retain, an environmental consultant to help advise us in that area. And, you know, that's something that maybe we should consider doing something about, looking at, not necessarily actually retaining them, but looking at what opportunities and whether that is a fruitful thing to undertake in advance so that we're better prepared for the final EA, the Fonzie. But this is one of many things that, you know, again, we're taking a lot of time now that I feel would be helpful. I, you know, recognize, you know, Jack's comments that this could take forever, Randy's comments saying that it's all repetitive, we don't need to cover it, it's somewhere in between there. And so I'm encouraging an opportunity for the council to deliberate what more we can do, if anything, and not take the time now to do it, but as an agenda item.
Well, I, as I listen to all this, we have little or no input to make to the EA that's going to be taken in by the administrators of that, number one. Number two, none of this is going to happen rapidly. I'm just not sure what preparations we can make for alternative scenarios of the EA. Why don't we get it from them? There's literally months and years, and I've even said, I doubt this thing would ever be built in my lifetime. So for a whole bunch of reasons that are evident in the public domain that you can read about. So when this thing comes out, I think, let's just pick it up then. I think to speculate and, yes, I think a lot of people are concerned about it, including every member of this council. But I mean, just to kind of go through the whole thing, in preparation for something we don't know what it's going to be, I think is, this council tends to be more deliberative and executory and judicial, rather than, you know, conducting workshops on something that's been really fully hashed out, I think.
Well, I'm not sure those comments are shared by many of the folks in the community, and one can argue whether, you know, you're right or they're right, but certainly at the last council meeting, as watching the video, there are many comments made by the public, you know, concerning the process, and I think it's imperative that we act in a way that's transparent, collaborative, and cooperative with the citizens in this area.
Indeed, indeed, but also almost none of it that I can think of, or none of it that I can think of as I sit here was new. I mean, it was all new. So, I mean, all old stuff.
There is nothing that we can do now, other than spend money on either a lawyer or on lobbying. So we have a meeting, you have it maybe six weeks from now, within, within a month of the EA coming out. What the heck can you do to influence, to influence that? You might as well just take $100,000, go out in the street and rip it up. I mean, there's, there's no stomach for this at the table right now. There was no stomach for this, quite frankly, when we met in executive session around November. We talked about, we talked about taking legal action. It was, it was, we don't, we don't know what to do, we don't think there's any benefit to it. We, let's, we decided, we decided as a council to, let's wait for the EA. Here we are, five, six months later, not that, not that long, and we're bringing it up again. And we can have absolutely no influence at this point with the, with any kind of expenditure that I can possibly think of, or that, when I've had singular conversations with anybody at this dais, and including those that aren't, there's just, there's no stomach for doing it. I don't even know why we're talking about this.
This tends to morph into something that's so complete...
I agree with the communication thing, the collaborative thing and the whatever thing, but the spending money thing, which is, which is what, the only thing that is of any consequence, it's totally ridiculous at this point in the process.
I just think this thing gets so open-ended that we can't get our hands around it, and we got to dial this thing back a little bit here. I don't see what there is to be done before the EA comes out. I mean, we're battling against common sense here.
Well, if Alderman Bushman has some specific actions that he thinks could be taken, would this body be opposed to considering them at a future agenda item?
Well...
I think they would need to be identified and presented through a process of some sort so that it's not so open-ended.
So if, well, that's why I said specific recommendations brought forth at a future, at a future meeting. I mean, I, for one, would...
Well, we are going to talk about it at a future meeting, so I think we're maybe talking more about timing here than anything else. I don't think there's a sense of the council here to move forward with a discussion in the council setting at this time.
I thought it would be helpful that, to have it, and obviously, this is something that, you know, we have had feedback from our fellow council members on, and certainly, but it was important to me is that we stay open-minded for opportunities now or tomorrow or any time even before the final EA comes out. If there are things we can do, whether it's writing letters of support to Congressman Schneider in terms of his desires to have a freight impact study, or, you know, Senator Morrison, you know, supporting her and her efforts, these are things we should be considering and not simply say, let's do nothing until the EA comes out. But if we have specifics, we can come back and address those.
Yeah, always open-minded.
I thought, you know, that discussion would result in coming up with specifics, whether saying we want to look at possible environmental consultants without spending money, but just have names and ideas of who they are.
I think that can be rounded up pretty quickly, in the way these things are done. And again, I don't think there's any speed in the reaction time, because it's frankly almost impossible to conceive it's not going to come back with a whole bunch of conditions, the EA that are going to have to be addressed, so. All right. I'd like to move on to next item of business, which is the opportunity for citizens to address the city council on non-agenda items. And I do have one request from a Richard Tucker at 1421 Arbor Lane. Please.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity tonight. I hope my areas of concern are not actually redundant to what we've already heard. A couple of things that appear over, over the last, recent memory, there are concerns about safety within the city and revenue. And I had, I had a question really for the board, or the council, or even for the, for the staff, that one of, one of the quote-quote concerns I have on the Amtrak stop is they, there was comments about a positive economic impact of having a stop in Lake Forest. And I don't quite understand where that idea was derived. Secondly, from a revenue standpoint, I never really saw, and perhaps it's my oversight, that when the city sold the property on, the original property off of Western Avenue, how much did the city actually get for that property? And if it's been published, I missed it, but I would like to know what that was. And as far as safety, the main concern at, on the West Side... And as far as safety, the main concern at, on the west side, the train-to-station issue, having an underpass for safety reasons, and yet, it seems that the city is more than willing to step out and increase the volume of traffic at the intersection of Everett and Waukegan by putting in a car wash. And I don't see where the economic impact happens to reside in a car wash. And if it's an issue where the landowner feels their hands are tied, I would hope that the city would be able to give them some options with alternate zoning, so they can maximize their revenue, but also enhance our west-side city of Lake Forest. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All of these are matters that have been addressed one time or another, and I will ask staff to send you some excerpts of various things that address these questions.
I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Any other individuals wishing to speak tonight? Uh, see, yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I got one, I'm sorry. Please, please identify yourself and your address, please.
My name is Mary O'Donnell, and I live in West Lake Forest. And it has come with a lot of discussion with people who reside not only on the west side of Lake Forest, some even from the east side of Lake Forest, that when it comes to some of these issues, some council members, not all, come with a preconceived notion. They listen to the arguments, but I don't know how much attention they pay to the arguments, both pro and con. And I think it's important that the city council hear this. There are many residents who feel as I do about this issue.
Any other individuals wishing to address council? Seeing none, I'll turn to the next item of business, which are items for omnibus vote consideration. We have a list of nine tonight. One is the approval of the January 16, 2018 city council meeting minutes. Number two is the check register for the period of January 6 through 26, 2018. Approval to extend the city's office supplies contract. Four, approval of a resolution adopting a policy prohibiting sexual harassment for the city of Lake Forest. Consideration of an ordinance approving a recommendation from the building review board. This is a first reading, and if desired by council, a final approval. Consideration of an ordinance approving a recommendation from the Historic Preservation Commission. This is a first reading, and if desired by city council, final approval. Number seven, award of bid for the replacement of two Public Works track loaders included in the fiscal year 2019 capital equipment budget. Award of bid for the purchase of a compact loader for the forestry section included in the fiscal year 2019 capital equipment budget. And ninth and last, a capital award of bid for the replacement of three marked police vehicles including, included in the fiscal year 2019 capital equipment budget. As before, we can take these items together, or any item could be removed and taken separately. I do have two comments I'd like to make. The first is with respect to the check register, which in the packet for council in the long list of check register items is also, it includes a $37,552.35 payment to the Philippine Law Firm for November 2017 legal services. Of this amount, $9,668.85 is further reimbursement to the Philippine Law Firm for lobbying expenses by the CCH firm for the month of October 2017. Due to the city's termination of the CCH lobbying agreement effective December the 1st, 2017, October and November expenses are owed contractually. It is anticipated that CCH lobbying expenses for the month of November will be ratified on a future check register. And then the fourth thing I'd like to say is that upon inquiry, or the second thing is the fourth item, is that upon inquiry of city staff, the approval of a resolution adopting a policy of prohibiting sexual harassment for the city of Lake Forest, maybe it's poor wording more than anything, the city has for many, many years had a policy of, against many forms of harassment, of which sexual is one. And as is noted in our papers tonight, the state recently passed some elements of a sexual harassment policy for all corporate entities in the state, all of which, in their entirety, have, have been included and have been part of the city's sexual harassment policy for many, many years. So, I think there's kind of a, frankly, a little bit of a miswording in how this item was brought forth. So, those are my comments. Any comments, questions about any of these nine items?
Mr. Mayor, since we don't have a really tight agenda this evening, I know we have a executive session coming up, but I'd just like to take this check register out of the omnibus. I just have some questions about some of these lump sums and what they're composed of, especially in light of some of our recent activities in, in other funds and general funds, if you don't mind.
All right, shall we, that's a motion.
Yes, I'll make that.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll do that separately. With regard to the other eight, any particular questions or thoughts? If not, I'll.
There were eight in there?
Eight others.
Yeah, I know. I had some comments on the, um.
That's what I'm asking for.
Yeah, on, on the contract with the, the project for the, the golf course and that contract. That's not part of that, right?
No.
Fine.
Yeah. Okay, so with regard to the other eight, any particular thoughts or questions? If not, I would ask for a motion to approve the eight omnibus items, with the exception of the check register, as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Rummel?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Six yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you. Alderman Rumel?
Well, I just, when I'm looking through this check register, first of all, the $1.5 million all other funds pops out to me, and I just wondered what that's composed of.
The $1.5 million in invoices under the all other funds is made up primarily of $591,000 that was spent on the water plant project. So, the Water Plant Capital Improvements Fund is included in that subset, and it is also inclusive of $848,000 paid to IRMA, Intergovernmental Risk Management Agency, which is our annual member contribution for liability insurance. So, both of those funds typically don't have a lot of activity, so it's just kind of an anomaly that that number would be so big this month.
I wonder if it would help if that were broken out, when it's a large number like that, if we could break, then I wouldn't have to yank it out of the omnibus approvals, and we would have a better understanding, especially when it's a number of that magnitude.
Sure, I can absolutely add a footnote to that.
Thank you, and I have the similar question then, under the general, $439,000.
Mm-hmm. That is made up of a lot of individual expenses, but that, that is where the $37,000 payment to Philippine Law Firm would be included in that subtotal.
That's why I called that out in particular, that's where something such as that would have been.
Right.
And the capital improvements?
Capital improvements are just budgeted capital improvements in the capital improvements fund, and those were just progress payments on those capital projects.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, you're welcome.
Yeah, there's, typically, the check register is a rather voluminous thing in its entirety, so there's an attempt to put it into an orderly form. I think, you know, going forward, anybody at any time is welcome, you know, call staff when you have a question about something that's more administrative than anything else, and then I think.
Right, for example, item seven in the omnibus is the award of bid for replacement of two Public Works track loaders. That's going to show up in the, in the check register in the not-too-distant future, as will, I think, number eight, a cap, or compact loader. So, we pre-discuss all this stuff, and then it shows up in the register, but I understand your point about.
Right, right, but when it's a $1.5 million, then I don't know what it is.
Absolutely.
Just have questions about it.
Does anybody feel that we should remove the check register from the omnibus agenda? Because it's, it doesn't have, it has enough information to be dangerous, but not enough to be informative?
I thought we could not remove it.
Why?
I thought it had to be, all expenditures had to be approved by city council.
Is that why it's there?
Well, it's ratified. Yeah.
So, I'm breaking the law, if I suggest.
Or you can change the code.
Let's do it anyhow.
Well, I, but I understand Jack's point is, is we aren't, you know, you and I are looking at what makes sense.
Quite frankly, I look at this and I go, huh? There's $439,000, you know, I mean, without any, without any, you know, this is, I just kind of like.
Right, and it may be helpful even for those just watching the, the meeting. What happens is the detail, the individual checks with each payee, a check number, a check date, and amount, is all reviewed by the city council finance committee chairman.
That's what I thought, which is why I said.
He approves that, and then the summary is included on the omnibus agenda for council ratification. So, when this appears on the agenda, the city council finance chairman has reviewed the detail, and that is obviously available to any council member that would like that, but he has reviewed that in, in detail, per check.
The, the detail is its own mind-numbing experience, so it'd be very hard to extract what's meaningful in here. So, it's attempt, there's an attempt to put it into some categories. Now, just even going backward in time from what Elizabeth Hollup, city finance director, welcome, just said to us, is that these are budgeted monies. And so, in one sense, we've seen them, we have approved them, there's, it's worked through a very exacting process of, through city staff, to get to be actually an issued check, and then through, well, sunshine laws and other things, it, there's this ratification process where they, these have to be brought forth. So, that's how it all really.
Thank you, and I think that's a helpful discussion, not just for us, but for people at home who are watching, especially in light of some of our current issues, so.
I would also note that we've recently added more internal controls as a result of the lobbying experience, and additional review by the finance committee. So, by the time this gets to us, it's, it's well-vetted.
Yeah, that, that's truly the case, and who allowed the finance committee chair to go on vacation? What I want to know. Okay, so with that explanation, do I have a motion to approve the check register for the period of January 6th to 26, 2018?
I will move.
Second.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Rumel?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Six yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you. Next item of business is ordinances. We actually have none to bring forth tonight. Item number seven, new business. Consideration of a resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to finalize and execute the Friends of Lake Forest Parks and Recreation Foundation demonstration project agreement, which will be presented by Alderman Tim Newman of the Golf Fundraising Committee, and Sally Swarthout, Director of Parks, Recreation, and Forestry. Alderman Newman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Before you tonight, it's a resolution asking for approval of this demonstration project agreement. Just to give you some real quick background, five years ago, when we undertook the master plan, the initial number was quite large, we whittled that down, and as it continued to unfold, it became obvious that the city had limited financial resources to devote to the refurbishment of the golf course, which had been largely ignored for 20 years. It's a competitive marketplace, we decided to move forward, and given the success of other public-private partnerships throughout the, throughout the city's history, we decided to pursue a similar structure. So, we've been successful in raising money. The city committed $1.2 million to some infrastructure improvements, including drainage improvements, a continuous golf cart path, and a refurbishment of the clubhouse, locker rooms, and patio. That was very well-received the last two years. Next year, we'll have in operation the continuous golf cart path. But as it fell through the process, it became apparent that there was a level of amenities that the city would not be able to fund. And so, in discussions with the Friends of the Lake Forest Park and Rec Foundation, they offered to step forward to, to take on that role of completing these other amenities, and the amenities include a halfway house with a concession stand and, and weather shelter, a short game improvement area, and some other items. I don't want to steal Sally's thunder, but I'm going to turn it over to her to, she has a brief presentation. And I also see in the audience PJ O'Neil, who's president of the Friends of the Lake Forest Park and Rec Foundation, he may have some things to say as well. Sally?
Thank you, Alderman Newman. Thank you, Mayor, and Alderman, for welcoming me to the podium. Mr. Newman has covered quite a bit of my presentation, but I'll, I'll keep going. Just want to give you some background, so people are aware of the discussions that we've had over the past two years pertaining to this project. In 2015, city council reaffirmed that its commitments to the golf course, Deerpath Golf Course. And at that time, they directed the golf advisory committee to prepare a long-range master plan to improve course conditions and the financial picture with Lowman Golf. And the outcome of that exercise was the 2016 master enhancement plan. As Mr. Newman, Alderman Newman indicated, there were some specific property improvements that city council was willing to undertake, and that was to the clubhouse and the locker rooms, the patio, the drainage, the cart paths. The patio and the locker room and the clubhouse was completed in the spring of 2017, and the cart paths and the drainage was significantly completed in the fall of 2017, and will come to its completion, complete completion, in the spring of 2018. So, throughout the discussions, city council has reiterated that public resources would not be used for the enhancement portion of the master plan, including, as mentioned before, the greens and approaches drainage, the halfway house, the comfort station, the cart barn and fleet, the waterless restroom, the driving range expansion, and the, the new short game practice area. The Friends of Lake Forest Parks and Recreation Foundation has agreed to a public-private partnership with the city to complete the scope of the enhancements, and the foundation was actually established to provide recreational opportunities and experiences for the residents of Lake Forest in order to foster the sense of community among the residents, to assist with the development of parks and recreation programs and facilities, and to provide a philanthropic vehicle to encourage everything, enriching capital improvements to parks and recreation. The foundation believes that implementing the course enhancements will further its goals and its mission. As you can see up on the screen, we have a schematic of the master plan itself. The improvements proposed for implementation by the foundation are indicated by the blue dots. Number one at the very top of the page is the halfway house. Number two is the waterless restrooms. Number three, the cart barn and fleet location. Number four would be the expansion of the driving range, and number five is the short game practice area. And it should be noted that the greens and approaches drainage is throughout the course. The city has committed to and completed $1.2 million in its improvements to the patio, the clubhouse drainage, and cart paths, and the proposed scope. to the patio, the clubhouse, drainage, and cart paths. And the proposed scope of the foundation's work is listed and estimated at $2 million for a total cost for this project, for the master plan improvement of 3.225. And so, the fundraising committee is asking for this recommendation to grant approval of the agreement and substantially the form attached at exhibit, as exhibit one to the resolution, and to authorize and direct the city manager to, in consultation with the city attorney, to finalize the terms and exhibits in the agreement, and authorize and direct the mayor to execute the agreement on behalf of the city, consistent with the terms of the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much. Will the clerk please call the roll?
I have a comment.
Shoot, I thought we'd be able to get by that.
Section seven, indemnification. It's on page four of this agreement. I just have a quick question about why we are excusing the contractor from indemnifying the city as long as the demonstration project contractor agrees directly to indemnify the city indemnities. Did you follow me?
Uh, yes.
I would, because I'm thinking I would prefer to leave the corporation also in there as having also an obligation to indemnify the city if there's a problem with one of these demonstration project contractors.
I understand what you're saying. The, strictly speaking, the, the language here doesn't absolve the contractor of their indemnification obligation here. They're, they have that obligation. They could satisfy it in several ways, one of which is to offer an indemnification of, they have the contractor indemnify the city on their behalf. And the, there is added level of security there as well, in that the contractor is to post a, a security of 110% of the value of the project. And the city manager himself is, is, under, it's section five, is able to approve or disapprove of that contractor. So, you're saying that without, your concern is that the corporation is relieved of this responsibility. They're not, they're, they're simply sat, they can either directly satisfy it or have somebody contract to satisfy it on their behalf, and this simply acknowledges-
Right. I understand that. But I want to be sure that the corporation is very cautious in entering into these contracts with the demonstration project contractors. And so, I wa, I would like them to be directly accountable to indemnify the city if there's an issue. So, I would just add some language in there that makes it clear that they're still also responsible for indemnifying the city.
I understand.
And there's also a typo. If you go up to section five, you just need to rework the language in the first section, the first sentence of section five.
Pardon me while I get that.
It, it, there's, there's an extra word in there. To provide to the corporation with a security, I think you need to take "with" out and just a "security."
Thank you for that, Alderman.
You're welcome.
I have a question. In connection with the golf operations, you know, we're discussing here different expenses. I want to ask a question about the other side of the ledger. We have an income stream that flows from the golf operations. How is that treated, or does that affect any of the expenditures we're talking about here?
The enhancement project expenditures would be completely separate from the golf operations because they would be in agreement with the foundation.
Okay. Refresh by, if you could help me here, how are the income monies that are generated from the golf operations? How are they handled? They go into a separate fund, or what?
The, the operational income from the golf course is funded through a, a budget. Kemper manages the budget for us, but it is a city budget that city council approves-
Right. But the city monies, they're, they're handling it. But, but those monies that the income stream-
Yeah, it's an enterprise fund.
It's an enterprise.
But do they flow at all towards any of these expenses, or-
No.
We treat, we treat them separately?
We do.
Is there a, a positive income flow from that, that-
Not yet, but it's getting closer.
Okay, we're hoping, we're still hoping.
Well, that's part of why that we did the drainage and the continuous cart path because, and actually, I think there was a presentation at the last meeting, Alderman, that they're doing pretty well, but the storms and the rains that we had in July really set us back a couple of weeks there. But we're getting better, and we're hoping that 18 is going to be even better than 17. Especially because it was announced recently that Highland Park Country Club will be closing down, which should help in terms of supply and demand.
There'll be some marketing effort to that personnel, as you said.
Very good.
Yep. That'd be good, if we can get a positive income stream.
That's, yeah, that's our goal.
Well, that's the wellspring of the entire discussion. And it is getting better, much better. And actually, what happened in 17 is quite promising now as we look to 18. And, and the enhancements are part of it, and the forthcoming enhancements are part of this enthusiasm.
The only thing, I keep seeing these expenditures going out. I never see the other side of the ledger.
Well, it's, it's, yeah, there's a difference between GAAP and operating accounts.
Actually, you'll see it at the March 5 budget meeting.
Okay. Any other thoughts? If not, I will restate the motion here. Is there a motion to approve the agreement and substantially the form attached as exhibit one to the resolution, and to authorize and direct the city manager in consultation with the city attorney to finalize the terms and exhibits to the agreement, and to also authorize and direct the mayor to execute the agreement on behalf of the city, consistent with the terms of this resolution? So moved again.
Second.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Mayor, may, before maybe you take the vote, do you want to ask if there's anybody in the audience that may want to make a comment?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Yes. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this particular matter? I, I'm very sorry. Seeing none.
And this is subject to the changes that I proposed, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Remove that "with." Remove that "with."
Pardon me? What did you say?
Remove the "with."
Remove the "with."
If the "with" stays, then I'm not going for it.
Remove that "with."
City Clerk, Boyer.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Rommel?
Aye.
Alderman Tack?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Six yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a consideration of a professional services contract to provide consulting services related to evaluation of financial incentive requests for prospective hotels in the Route 60 corridor, presented by Catherine J. Zerniak, Director of Community Development.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Council action is requested to authorize the city attorney to engage CBRE, CBRE Inc. to assist the city in some financial analysis. The city has previously worked with Michael Tobin of CBRE. He actually provided some financial services, financial analysis, and recommendations with respect to the Laurel Avenue project in our work with Focus Development. In this instance, we are recommending bringing in Michael Tobin, and as he sees fit, some of his associates, to help the city analyze one or more prospective requests for incentives to support a hotel development in the Route 60 corridor. We are trying to be a bit ahead of the game. We have talked about the potential for a hotel in Conway Park or in that vicinity for probably more than 20 years. We do have a couple prospective hotel developments that we expect to come forward, or at least for discussion. In bringing in Michael Tobin, he will bring in the expertise that we do not have on the staff level. He will make sure that we, we get appropriate information from the prospective hotel developers, that we ask them the right questions, that we do an analysis, that we look at both the short-term benefits and long-term benefits to the city, and, and really evaluate whether any incentives are appropriate. Many municipalities do offer incentives to hotels that have developed in their community. The request before you is a recommendation to allow the city attorney to engage the consultant, specifically because the information that we will request from the hotel developers will be confidential. In fact, they will not provide it to us unless it is, they have a guarantee that it will be confidential. By allowing this consultant to be engaged through the city attorney's firm, it will allow that information to remain consult, confidential, and will allow us to do a very thorough analysis. Both the mayor and chairman of the finance committee, Alderman Morris, will be involved in discussions with the consultant. Any recommendation on an incentive package will come before the full city council for consideration of a public meeting. If you choose to do so, it would be appropriate to approve a motion to authorize the city attorney to engage CBRE Inc. for an amount not to exceed $30,000 for the purposes I described it. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Kathy? It seems to me that we proved this, that the payment to be, that would be made to Tobin and his firm will be paid by the law firm who engages Mr. Tobin. And the reason that we're doing this is so that we can preserve the attorney-client privilege so that the information will remain confidential.
That's correct. And furthermore, to assure that the hotel developers provide us with full and complete information with that assurance that they'll have that confidentiality.
Sure. Okay.
Yeah, it's kind of an unusual request. I guess we haven't had one of these in my memory. It is, you know, in the world of real estate, it's difficult to create hotels. They're, they're very hard to inculcate sort of in, in a community. Therefore, there's been a history, much of which I've not been supportive of, of, of communities offering incentives. But we don't even know what the question is until we can look under the hood with the developers and kind of see their numbers and whether they're dumbing them down to look like a, you know-
Correct.
-poor cousin, you know, as they come to us. All this kind of stuff. So, it's all gonna ultimately come back to the council. It'll be yea or nay by the council. There's, it's nothing more to it than what, what's just been described, you know?
Would this be something, though, that, that we would ever put out to bid? It is a $25,000 to $30,000 contract. What's our, I mean, would this be the type of thing that should be competitively bid? There must be other organizations or firms out there that do similar work.
Under Illinois law, you're not required to competitively bid this because this is professional services. And so, while there are other people out there, when we did this for the Laurel Avenue project, we actually put this out for bid, if you will, and we asked for qualifications from a couple of people and selected Michael Tobin. Actually, I think in that case, it was the PPL committee selected Michael Tobin. And because of the experience that we had with him and his knowledge of the community, we felt that rather than take the time that, actually, in a consulting practice or a consulting arrangement, this is actually a relatively small amount. Because keep in mind, this is for two petitions. If the second petition doesn't come forward, then it's going to be roughly half of this cost. And that was his best estimate. So, and I think quite, and Kathy can talk about this quite candidly, we're on a rather tight timeline because I think the first hotel petition is before the building review board at their next meeting.
Oh, well, I was, I was not delighted to see his hourly rate. I think it's rather high. And, and then he calls it his 2014 standard hourly rate. I, I assume it hasn't been inflated from 2014 to 2018. I don't, I don't know. But I, I wonder if we can investigate some other similar firms to do this. I'm pretty sure that there are other firms out there who would, would do this as well.
This, this case may be a case, though, you get what you pay for. I mean, I was the chairman of the PPL when we brought him in to, to work with us on Laurel and Western Avenue. And I can verify the work that he did was, was quite good. And this is, I guess this is kind of like when you're building an airplane. You may not always want to get the lowest bidder. So, I mean, and it's professional services.
It's not just a matter of price. It's, I, it's also, you know, other people who may, may have experience as well. You know, I, all of us can probably think of, of people we know who maybe have done similar work. I'm not sure that there are a lot out there, but-
Well, I'm kind of in the middle of that world in my day job. And it's very, there's a lot of people willing to give advice and thoughts for hourly fee. There, there are very few people who are engaged in the market, part of a firm that's actually engaged in the markets, that making investment decisions and transacting properties. So, I think part of the experience we've had with CBRE Firm and Michael Tobin and his Development Services Advisory Group is that it's contextually very good and timely by a practitioner rather than just someone who used to work for a hotel company or something. As for these rates, again, given the tens of millions of dollars involved in these projects, no, I don't find these high at all myself. Not at all.
It's high in my world.
I buy a lot of services, law and otherwise. Okay. Any other thoughts, questions? May I have a motion to authorize the city attorney to engage CBRE Inc. on behalf of the city for an amount-
Questions.
Oh, I gotta do this again. I know, I can't, I just don't remember. Are there any questions or comments from the public here present tonight? Seeing none, I will ask for a motion to authorize the city attorney to engage CBRE on behalf of the city for an amount not to exceed $30,000 in approved payment of costs related to this engagement to the Filipino law firm. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Rommel?
Nay.
Alderman Tack?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Abstain.
Four one, motion carries with one abstention.
Because the abstention comes with a majority.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Item number eight, additional items for council discussion.
I'd like to, kind of unusual, I'd like to address the question or the statement that Ms. O'Donnell made while she was, during public comment. Yeah, I, I was on the plan commission for six years, the last three years as, as chairman. And I've been on city council for five years. I got, I have a year left. You know, when you come into these, when you come into the meetings, particularly on the bigger issues, it's not unusual to have done extensive research. By that I mean, you will have reviewed all the information that's before you this evening. If it's something, a, a large project, you will have, it's not unusual for, I don't come to those meetings, I don't come to the building review meetings, I don't come to the planning commission meetings. But it's not unusual to get a tape of every one of those meetings if it's a plan commission meeting. It's not unusual, if it's a complicated matter, to, to discuss, discuss it with city staff, whether it's with Ms. Zerniak or Mike Thomas, if it's Public Works, or Sally, if it's Park and Recreation. So, it's quite different, it's quite difficult not to come into a meeting like that and not have an opinion because you've reviewed all the information. And I'm often fond of saying I'm often wrong, but never uncertain. So, it's not unusual for me to come into those meetings. But I will tell you also, when I was chairman of the plan commission and meetings here, it's not unusual to come here, to come in and you hear public testimony. And we're really kind of not allowed to talk to the individual councilmen. You can count, you can talk to them one-on-one, but we're, we're prohibited from doing that in an open meeting format. So, it's not unusual for me to change my mind. When you, I mean, you can, Melanie can come up with some additional facts or, or Michelle, that I didn't, let's, whoa. that I didn't, let's, whoa, is that correct? Yeah, well, okay. So it's not unusual to do that. So, and I don't think we need comment from anybody else, but I wouldn't, I probably wouldn't be unusual for everybody to kind of agree with me on this. Because when you come in here, yeah, yeah, I kind of know where I'm feeling with this thing. And then you hear some of this stuff and you go, well, and I hadn't thought of that. So you change your mind. So I just kind of wanted to address that. Sometimes, sometimes when you come in and with a very strong point of view and it's not changed, you may think that, oh, you know, it's the thing, he just doesn't have an open mind. I don't think that's true. I don't think that's true with my, it's not true with myself, and I know a lot of these people because I've worked with them in this setting, and I don't think it's true with them either. So I'd kind of like to put your mind at ease if I possibly could on that issue. That's all I had to say.
Thank you. Well said, Jack. Yes, I think everyone up here appreciates that. You know, sometimes people say, well, gee, you never really discuss something. Well, often, it's the fourth, fifth, sixth time we've dealt with it. There's been prior meetings, it's in all kinds of budget documents or other kinds of prepared materials that we've studied at length. And the purpose of the council meeting is more executory and not, per se, a public reading of everything that's been going on historically about an issue, so. Any other comments at the end of the meeting here? I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn into executive session pursuant to Illinois Statute 120/2C1 for the purposes of discussing personnel matters. So moved.
Second.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Rommel?
Aye.
Alderman Tack?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Six yea, zero nay, motion carries.
For everyone's benefit, there will be no further council business at the conclusion of the executive session this evening.